Good evening. On behalf of the Enfield High School Youth Vote Committee, I would like to welcome you to the Enfield Town Council Debate. My name is Sarah Passmore and I am the moderator for tonight's debate. We will start tonight's proceedings with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may now be seated. Before we start, I would like to point out the emergency exits. There is one located at the side of the stage to the audience's right, and two on either side at the back of the auditorium. The debate is for the public and is hosted by the Enfield High School Youth Vote Committee students. The goal of this debate is to familiarize the public with the town council candidates and their positions on campaign issues. This debate will begin with each candidate giving one-minute opening statement, followed by sixteen questions divided into two rounds of eight questions asked by the four panelists. The order of questions was determined prior to the debate. Each candidate answering question will be granted two minutes or 120 seconds to respond. Candidates, your time remaining will be displayed on two cards by one of our timekeepers in the pit in front of the stage. The yellow card indicates that you have thirty seconds remaining, and the red card indicates that your time has ended. The candidate giving the rebuttal will be given one and a half minutes or ninety seconds to respond. The order for opening remarks, closing remarks, and the question or responses was determined by coin toss. Following the sixteen questions, there will be a third round. In this round, the same question will be posed to all candidates. We ask that each candidate honor the time that he or she will be allotted to answer or rebut a question. We also ask each candidate to display proper decorum throughout the debate. We ask that proper decorum from the audience be maintained during this important civic event. Audience members are requested to hold all applause until the end, so the candidates have all their allotted time to fully answer or rebut their given questions. Audience members are also reminded to refrain from comments or other disruptive outbursts. If audience members do not comply with the aforementioned debate guidelines, they risk of being asked to leave the premises. It is now my honor to introduce the 2017 Town Council Candidates for tonight's debate. For the Democrats, District One Candidate, Mr. Steven Nemitz. District Two Candidate, Mr. Robert Crisati. District Three Candidate, Ms. Mrs. Marie Davis. District Four Candidate, Mr. Edward Dunne. And the at-large candidates, Mr. Tom Arnoni, Mrs. Gina Sikala, Mrs. Liz Davis, and Mr. Timothy Norris. For the Republicans, District One Candidate, Mr. Joe Bosco. District Two Candidate, Mrs. Kelly Hemler. District Three Candidate, Mrs. Donna Suzak. District Four Candidate, Mrs. Marie Pisner. At-large Candidates, Mr. Peter Falk, Mr. Mike Ludwig, Mr. Joseph Muller, and Mrs. Lori Ungeyer. Now each candidate will be given one minute for their opening remarks. The Republican Party chose -- party won the coin toss and chooses to go second. So we will begin with Mr. Nemitz.
Good evening. My name is Steve Nemitz, and I am the Democratic Candidate for Town Council representing District One. I have lived in Enfield for over thirty years. My family includes my wife, Robin, our three grown sons, David, Christopher, Steven, my daughter-in-law, Sarah, and my grandson, William. I was raised in an era when we were encouraged to enter public service by our mentors, by our teachers, and by our political leaders. That didn't take long. As such, I have spent almost my entire life in public service. I've served as a firefighter and fire commissioner. I volunteered, served in the military, and worked for the Military Department for thirty-four years and supported a National Guard mission here in Connecticut. I have also served on major boards and commissions in two different towns. I feel that these experiences will help me be an effective counselor should I be elected on November seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nemitz. Mr. Crisati?
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Bob Crisati, District Two Councilman, seeking reelection. I'm running for office because I'm passionate about the town of Enfield and its residents. I've been invested in the Enfield community and its citizens for many years. I want the best for everyone, all ages, all socioeconomic levels, all citizens of Enfield. I'm married and have four children and five grandchildren. As a retired teacher, I taught in the Enfield schools for thirty-six years, and I've been involved in Enfield for thirty-eight years. My family has deep roots in Enfield from approximately nineteen sixteen to present. I've spent -- excuse me, my wife Marilyn and my children all graduated from the Enfield school system and have gone on to be successful in their adult lives. I spent thirty-eight years in Enfield as a teacher, a citizen, a homeowner, a parent, and a small business owner. I see the town through many lenses, what has worked and what hasn't.
Thank you, Mr. Crisati.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Marie Davis?
Good evening. My name is Marie Davis, and I'm running for Town Council Seat in District Three. I've lived in Enfield for eleven years, and I have five children and five grandchildren. My daughter attends JFK, and my grandchildren attend the Enfield Public Schools. I'm running for office to make a positive difference for our town. I believe it's important to be a responsive Town Counselor who actively listens to citizens' concerns and represents our citizens on the council as together we build a stronger Enfield. Professionally, I'm a public school educator with over twenty years' experience. I hold a doctorate in educational leadership and have been a special education teacher and currently a special education administrator. In this role, I'm held responsible to be a good steward of public funds, be a responsible budgeter, strategically plan for my schools, and I also hire, manage, and develop staff. I look forward to answering tonight's questions and informing the voters of Enfield about the choices.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Dunne?
I am Ed Dunne, District Four Counselor, running again for the third term. I'm married to Barbara. I have four children, five grandchildren, two are still in the public school systems, and one who lives with me as a junior. I'm retired, thirty-four years of military service. As a lifelong resident of Enfield, I care about Enfield. I'm committed to working to keep taxes affordable for seniors and young families in our community. I also believe that fiscal responsibility means smart with our tax dollars, maintaining our infrastructure and the quality of life and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne. Mr. Arnoni?
Good evening. Thank you, students and faculty, for putting this on tonight and giving us this opportunity. My name's Tom Arnoni. I'm seeking my fourth term on the Town Council. I'm a common-sense community organizer with a record of taking on tough challenges in our town. Our team is committed to making Enfield affordable while preserving town services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnoni. Mrs. Sikala?
I too am not going to see that red card. I'm Gina Sikala. I am running at Town Council at-large for the Democratic Slate. I am seeking my third term. I have grown up in Enfield. I am now raising my family and my children in Enfield. Hi, family. I am a practicing attorney, and I think that experience helps me know how to negotiate. I know how to conflict resolve. I know how to advocate for a position, and I also know how to listen to other people's positions. I do a lot of volunteering here in Enfield, PTO, softball, baseball, you name it. Over the last four years, I've learned a lot, and I hope to continue to help this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sikala. Mrs. Liz Davis?
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the staff and students for putting on the youth vote. I'm Liz Davis, and I'm running for office because, upon retirement from the military, I vowed to continue to serve the people. I believe our town needs strong leadership that will work together as a team so we can improve the quality of life for all our citizens. Through the years, I've been very active participant in town-wide meetings and activities. I have witnessed critical decisions being made without including public thoughts or concerns. I believe every citizen has a voice, and being elected official, it's your responsibility to listen to those voices and represent them. The Democrat team will listen to your voice. We hear you loud and clearly, and we will represent you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Norris?
Good evening. First, thank you to the Youth Vote Committee for putting on this event. It's wonderful to see the youth of Enfield involved in civic activities at such a young age. I'm Tim Norris. I'm running for Town Council at-large. I'm the father of three sons who attend our amazing Enfield Public Schools. I'm an avid volunteer who was raised in a home where service to your country and community was encouraged. I learned early on to think globally and act locally. For the last seventeen years, I have volunteered my time here in Enfield. I've served as an Enfield Town Constable on the Revitalization Committee, currently the Chairman of the Enfield Beautification Committee. I, along with my oldest son, founded the Skanik River Cleanup. I've coached to-you soccer, baseball, youth, and high school basketball. I've also worked in our schools and at our youth center. The Democratic Candidates for both the Town Council and the Board of Ed have my utmost respect. On Tuesday, November seventh, I humbly ask for your vote for me and the rest of the candidates on Row Eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Now, the Republican Party will give their opening remarks. Mr. Bosco?
Yes, hi. My name's Joe Bosco. I'm running for District One, sixth term. For over a hundred years, my family has been here in Enfield. Some of my accomplishments during the councils that I've been in is I was the one that got the single stream recycling figured out where it would not cost the town any money, any additional funds than what we were paying. I got Buckhorn Estates Rocket Run, Mullen Road completed when they weren't even on the agenda. I have also, with the help of the DPW Committee, Donna and crew, was instrumental in getting a vehicle replacement plan done so our employees don't have to drive with broken frames and stop signs for floorboards. And with the help of Mike Ludwig, we were able to save the sidewalks of Edgewood, Deepwood, Brentwood, and that ended up saving the town of Enfield approximately a hundred grand. So I ask for your vote, and I hope that I can serve you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bosco. Mrs. Hemler?
Hi. My name is Kelly Hemler, but I'm actually well-known as just Kelly. I grew up in Enfield, attended JFK, and graduated from Enfield High in nineteen eighty-three. I went on to get a degree in accounting from Manchester Community College. I've raised two daughters here, currently live in Thompsonville Village, and I run a small bookkeeping firm since two thousand and four. I'm excited and energized about serving on the Town Council and being the voice for District Two. I believe that economic growth is the best way to keep taxes in check and building a thriving community. If you live in District Two, please vote for me, Kelly Hemler, and our Republican at-large Candidates, Lori Ungeyer, Mike Ludwig, Peter Falk, and Joe Muller for the Town Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hemler. Mrs. Suzak?
Hi. I'm Donna Suzak, the Republican Candidate for District Three. I have served two terms on Board of Ed and two terms on Town Council in an at-large position. During my terms on Town Council, I have focused on leisure, DPW, and clean energy. We have completed the Brainerd Park Basketball and Volleyball Courts, Green Manor Skateboard Park, Playscapes at Whitney and Crandall, and three referendums were passed by the people: Roads 2015, the sewer treatment plant upgrade, performance contract, and a fourth referendum sods completion, the Consolidated Enfield High. So vote for me, Donna Suzak, for District Three, and the at-large Candidates, Peter Falk, Joe Muller, Lori Ungeyer, and Mike, my buddy, my walking buddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Suzak. Mrs. Pisner?
Hello. My name is Marie Pisner, and I am the Republican Candidate for District Four Town Council. I'm a lifetime resident of Enfield. My husband Jake and I, who I actually met right here at Enfield High School, have been married for forty-two years, and we've raised two daughters. As I walked and met my neighbors in District Four, I listened to their concerns, both positive and negative, and I found them as passionate about Enfield as I am. I am new to politics, but I am not new to Enfield. I am an advocate for all ages, and I've been an active volunteer. As your District Four person, I promise to bring a fresh set of eyes and ears to the council, and I ask for your vote on November seventh for myself and my entire Republican team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pisner. Mr. Falk?
Hello, fellow residents of Enfield. My name is Peter Falk, and I'm running for the Enfield Town Council at-large. I have served on the Town Council for seven terms back in the nineteen nineties, and I left in two thousand and two because of my work and family. I've been a resident of Enfield for forty-five years, and my wife Karen and I have two children. I retired last year after working forty-eight years as an engineer in the aerospace industry, and I wish to renew my commitment of serving the community. My civic duties extend well beyond the Town Council. I'm currently a Fire Commissioner in the Enfield Fire District, as well as a school mentor at the Parkman School. I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I was President of the Board of Directors for Literacy Volunteers. I believe it is an absolute pleasure serving our town, meeting our residents, understanding their needs, and making sure to respond when asked. That's what this is all about. I ask for your vote for me, Peter Falk at-large, and the entire Republican team, Vote Line B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Ludwig?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Ludwig, and I am running for reelection as Republican to the Enfield Town Council at-large seat. I am respectfully asking your vote on Tuesday, November seventh, for myself and my Republican colleagues on Row B. I'm a lifelong Enfield resident. I graduated from Fermi in eighteen -- nineteen eighty-seven. I earned my BA from Western New England College, and I earned my master's from the University of Hartford, a master's of MPA. I'm happily married to my wife Darlene, and we are blessed with two beautiful daughters, Maddie and Morgan. We have four cats and energetic Golden Labrador as part of our family. I am running for reelection for the Town Council because I want our children to have the same opportunity to raise their families here. Enfield is a great town to live in. I want to make the town, to continue to make it affordable, so our kids will have the choice to raise their families here by not leaving them unsustainable levels of debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Mr. Muller?
Good evening. Thank you, Enfield Public Schools and the Youth Vote Committee, for hosting this event. I'm Joe Muller, and I'm running for Town Council at-large. I've been in Enfield for thirty-two years, where I live with my two children, who are both in JFK. I'm the Building Superintendent at Isnumtuck Community College, where I've worked for twenty-two years, and I oversee all construction renovation projects. Currently, I'm the Commissioner on the Inlet Wetlands, Enfield High Building Committee, and I'm a Director on the Fourth of July Celebration. Previously, I served on the JFK Pre-Rev Committee and the Enfield Fields Committee. By sharing my talent, my time and talents, it is my way of saying thank you to Enfield, the place I love. Because of my construction experience and the opportunity to volunteer for the town, I feel I am ready to serve you as a Town Council member. Next Tuesday, please vote for me, Lori, Mike, Peter, for Republican Council at-large, Row B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Mrs. Ungeyer?
Good evening. My name is Lori Ungeyer, and I'm running for Town Council at-large. I grew up in Enfield, which started at St. Adalbert's, went to JFK, graduated from Enfield High, and I also graduated from Isnumtuck, where I met my husband John, who was a Fermi graduate. When we got married, we chose Enfield to reside in and raise a family. We have two sons who went through the Enfield School System, graduated from Fermi, and my son is also a teacher at JFK. In running for Town Council, I bring experience and understanding, having been on the Board of Ed for four years. I've been on the Craig Council in Hartford for four years, and numerous other volunteer positions. I've proven that I listen to all sides, and I can work together for what's best for Enfield. I love this town and the great people that live here.
Thank you, Mrs. Ungeyer. It is now time for the research questions asked by the students. The Democratic Party won the coin toss and chose to go second. The first question will be asked by Oralie Berry to Mr. Bosco with the rebuttal from Mr. Nemitz.
Mr. Bosco, you state in your candidate profile that one of your top priorities is to provide Enfield residents with excellent service at fair tax rate by effectively utilizing technology, recycling, and energy-efficient options. If reelected, in what specific ways should you and the Town Council effectively address this priority for District One?
Well, there's still a lot of roads and escarpments and a lot of infrastructure repairs that need to be done. And seeing as we are now going through the sewers referendum and for the public works part, I think that I would be an asset, because I do know construction. I do understand what needs to be done. And right through the whole time, I've always championed for any kind of repairs that be done. Mullen Road was one of them. I argued with the town on the way they were repairing the road to get it done. Come to find out, they were wrong. I was right, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. So with my construction experience, I think I could do wonders for District One and the whole town of Enfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bosco.
We do need to provide services at a reasonable tax rate. Nobody wants our taxes to go up. However, we don't want to cut our town services either, that we all cherish. I think we need a renewed economic development initiative in this town, one that we haven't done in a long time. And I think by growing our local economy and our growing our tax base, that this is the best way that we can provide the funds necessary to do the things that we do in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nemitz. The second question will be asked by Jamie Santiago to Mrs. Hemler with rebuttal from Mr. Crisati.
Mrs. Hemler, you state in your candidate profile that you view taxes as one of the most important pressing issues facing our town. You also complimented the current council by saying that they saw the state of Connecticut kicking the can down the road and tried to prepare by consolidating town services and selling recyclable trash. If elected, what further actions should you and the Town Council take in order to ensure that taxes are kept as low as possible for the people of District Two and the town as a whole?
One of the best ways to increase tax revenue is to increase taxpayers. Having a first-class education system is going to attract more families, and encouraging more businesses to come to town will spread out the tax base and bring in more for all the services that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crisati, your rebuttal?
I think an important -- an important issue is economic development in our town. Some examples to help with tax revenue that could come into Enfield is the proposed solar farm, which could generate between six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand annual income to our tax base, and so we don't have to think about increasing taxes for our people. And approximately nine million, maybe over a twenty-year period. Possibility of a proposed Amazon headquarter moving to Enfield. The transit project, proposed riverfront development's going to be important to our economic development plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisati. The third question will be asked by Caroline Williams to Mrs. Suzak with rebuttal from Mrs. Marie Davis.
Mrs. Suzak, Next Era Energy Resources is seeking to create a solar farm in Enfield with the majority of the project housed at Jarmack Farms. Next Era Energy Resources estimates that the project will bring over nine million dollars of tax revenue to Enfield over its twenty-year lifespan. Yet some residents are concerned about the project's potential impacts on property values and the local environment. To what extent, if any, should the town of Enfield take advantage of this opportunity to approve a solar farm at Jarmack Farms? Please explain your reasoning.
So this is a good question. I've attended all the meetings, and I've listened to everything that's said. And for me, one of the most important things is that this is being positioned by the state. And I think that the town needs to become an intervenor in this decision, because we do have our rules and regulations that are applicable to the town of Enfield. I've spoken with all the residents. I've toured the area. And it's also not just a twenty-year. It's a twenty-year plus, it could be another twenty years. For me, as I look at this, for me, this is kind of a change of use, because right now, the town of Enfield does not allow solar and residential, only industrial. And if this does come to Enfield, perhaps the land should be taxed at an industrial rate rather than a residential rate, and the benefits should come to the people of Enfield. And also, when you have an area that's two-hundred-and-sixty acres and you're developing a hundred acres, we need to look for the residents to have a larger buffer than just fifty feet. So with that, I say we need balance between growth, gaining revenues, and the residents that will live next to these growth areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Suzak. Mrs. Davis, your rebuttal?
I think that taking advantage of the opportunity to have a solar farm in Enfield would be wonderful for the town. However, as a member of the Town Council, I would definitely want to engage the input from town residents to hear what they would have to say about this initiative. Certainly, having clean, efficient, environmentally-friendly, alternative energy being created in our town would be wonderful, and it would be great to hear from the residents about that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. The fourth question will be asked by Haley Woods to Mrs. Pisner with the rebuttal from Mr. Dunne.
Mrs. Pisner, when asked what your priorities would be if elected, you state that you would bring our former Enfield mall back to life. Please discuss what you mean by this and your specific strategies for achieving this goal. Additionally, please discuss the specific ways in which the people of District Four and the town as a whole may benefit from this goal.
I first think by the transit system coming to Enfield, that would be a pathway to help the Enfield mall. I feel that Enfield is positioned in a great place. We have close access to the highway, to a major airport, and the train would bring us very close to going between Hartford and Springfield -- I'm sorry, New York and Boston. How that would reach out is by redeveloping downtown, the Enfield Village. You can reach that out into the mall. And I see the mall as being used as residential wellness center, stores, almost like its own little entity of a village. Take out some of the concrete, put in some green space, so that when you're driving down the highway, it's more visually appealing. I think the people of the coming generations, and I'll talk for myself, retired folks like to be in an area where everything's walkable. And I think that mall will provide a great space where people can live, have entertainment, have health and wellness, have shopping, have restaurants. But we need to think out of the box and do something different. So that's my plan for it, and if I get elected, I would work very closely with the economic development team to try to make that happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Pisner. Mr. Dunne?
Yes, well, I have an advantage. I was interviewed by the Boston Globe on this project about the Amazon. My quotes were, I gave him a demographic layout of what the town looked like. He had no idea, being in Boston. I think it's a great idea. There's a possibility of a flyover with a ramp coming off I-91. But again, I don't think that the town as a whole should be totally involved in this economic thing as far as dollars is concerned. We can profess it and go out and find businesses to come here, but dollar-wise, I think it's up to the individual businesspeople and their corporate executives to decide on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne. The fifth question will be asked by Oralie Berry to Mr. Falk with rebuttal from Mr. Arnoni.
Mr. Falk, the Enfield Patch recently reported that from January to June of two thousand seventeen, there were five-hundred-and-thirty-nine opioid overdoses in Connecticut. By the beginning of September, Enfield had eleven reported overdoses, including seven deaths. What specific role or roles should the Town Council play in addressing this opioid crisis?
First of all, I have to say that the opioid crisis isn't unique to Enfield. It's across the country. And I get emails from the town manager almost on a daily basis about another ambulance call for an overdose. So it's a problem that's here, and it won't go away. It's not like I can just go to somebody and say, "Stop using..." It's not like I can just go to somebody and say, stop using drugs. They're not going to stop unless they want to. So somehow, we need to educate the public, both the users and the family of the users, to try and get them to understand that they're, they're sick, they have an illness, and that they need to, if they want to get better, they, they have to get some help. Help is available in many different programs. Right now, most people don't know where that help is. So I, I can see the town as providing some guidance or leadership in recognizing where the help is and getting that information to the people that need it. We do have a group in town called the Enfield Together Coalition, which provides almost monthly seminars around town, dealing with different topics relating to opioids, opioids, and some of the solutions that might be available for those specific, specific topics. I know the Enfield Police belonged to an opiate task force at one time, but the towns that we were with bailed out on us, which left us by ourselves. And we can't run a program by ourselves because the officers can't go to their own town. People would know who they are and, and therefore, we got out of that. But there might be other options available, and we need to explore that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Arnoni, your rebuttal?
Thank you. I'm right now co-chair of the Enfield Together Coalition, so I, I really have a, kind of a heads up on this issue. And really, the up-to-date numbers are 17 deaths in Enfield and 20 brought back to life from Narcan. Thank God for Narcan, it would be 20, 27. And it's rising. We need to get back into a regional drug force. Our police department, I think it's essential that we dedicate officers to working on a state and a federal level to stop the opiates before they get to Enfield. Then our police department can clean up some of the smaller drug dealers in this town. We need to work between the police and social services to make sure that the people getting Narcan treatment are going to CHR for help and then coming right back in the revolving door and getting Narcan again. So we have to follow each and every addict through to make sure that they're getting the proper help that they need, which unfortunately, the, the help they need is not out there. It's very difficult for most addicts to get help because they're not insured. And with no insurance is no help, and very little of it. So I, I think our social services needs to take that, that initiative. Good news is, we have an opiate task force here in town. And the opiate task force is social services, EMS, the police department, trying to work together to find answers to this. But we have to take it that one step further.
Thank you, Mr. Arnoni.
Thank you. Track those addicts.
Thank you. The sixth question will be asked by Jamie Santiago to Mr. Ludwig with, with a rebuttal from Mrs. Sacala.
Mr. Ludwig, according to your candidate profile, one of your top priorities is to make Enfield more business-friendly with the, with the goal of creating increases in local revenue. What is your plan for addressing this priority? What role should the town council play in this issue?
Correct. So I think, I've actually already asked for this, the, the, I've already asked for a study of how long it takes a business to get through our planning and zoning and permitting process right now. Right now, I know it intuitively, it's taking way too long and they're spending way too much money on licenses and permits and things where they should be, again, following our rules, but establishing their business and paying local taxes. We, we, for revenues, we either raise taxes or we get local, nor businesses to pay taxes in town. I prefer having businesses come to town to pay taxes as opposed to asking for tax increases. So I've actually already asked the town manager, you know, to, to take a study, how long it takes for business to get through our process. So we can start from there and prove, again, find efficiencies so we can get folks to come to Enfield, get, help them get through the process and establish their business quicker so they're paying local taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Mrs. Sacala, your rebuttal?
Thank you. I, I think Enfield does a good job attracting businesses. If you think about it, Enfield is the, the sort of hub of the, the towns surrounding us. But I do think we can do better. I think we need to give benefits to businesses, larger and smaller, that will bring them to Enfield and keep them here. I think we need to have ease of getting permits, the online systems, let's keep that going. Let's get permitting done quicker. Let's get the zoning laws more business-friendly. And I, I think that that will help businesses come and stay here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacala. The seventh question will be asked by Caroline Williams to Mr. Mueller with a rebuttal from Mrs. Liz Davis.
Mr. Mueller, in your candidate profile, you state that the state's mismanagement of money and its impact on the town's budget as the most pressing issue facing Enfield over the next two years. You further maintain that the town council must not cut programs and departments to the, to the point that citizens are negatively affected, adding, "This balancing act requires negotiations between the council and the Board of Education." Please cite specific issues that could be subject to negotiation between the town council and the Board of Education. And please discuss how you would seek to address them if elected.
Correct. I, I did quote that. We're not sure the exact hit yet for Enfield, so once we get the exact number, we would know what we would need to do. As far as addressing how we would address it, we would have to meet an open forum, get input to see what needs to be done. The other would be insurance, how we would get the insurance and costs down. That would work. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Mrs. Davis, your rebuttal?
I would say you'd look at streamline our education system as well as our other public services, which include an analyst, current other services and their effectiveness under the current structure, structure. This will drive solid, long-range planning. When we actually consolidate our services and look at what programs are actually working, and with the town council and Board of Ed working together, I, we can save millions. Instead of doing, I would have to say, backdoor deals and wasting hard-earned taxpayer money on pet projects in town. So actually communicating with both together, consolidating our services, and it actually gives us extra revenue to enhance our services for the people that live here.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. The eighth question will be asked by Haley Woods to Mrs. Ungeyer with a rebuttal from Mr. Norris.
Mrs. Ungeyer, Enrico Fermi High School closed at the end of June 2016. Its facilities, however, are still used by adult education, Enfield High School's athletic teams, and the town of Enfield as a building annex. What should be the ultimate use of the Enrico Fermi building and its facilities? In what specific ways can the town council ensure that the Fermi building and its premises be used to maximum benefits for our town?
Well, to answer, answer this question, it's not something I could make personally. It would have to be with the whole town council. Actually, I think we should probably do better by just selling the property and selling the building and get some new businesses to come in, and perhaps they would have some ideas what to do with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ungeyer. Mr. Norris, your rebuttal?
I would not sell the property. I would keep it in town's hands. Perhaps make some of the adjustments that we need to do. Relocate our ambulance service over there. Right now, those fields are being used by schools, so I don't want to see us lose that building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. And now for our second round of questions. First question of round two will be asked by Oralie Berry to Mr. Neimetz with a rebuttal from Mr. Bosco.
Mr. Neimetz, you state in your candidate profile that one of your top priorities is to address the maintenance and upkeeping of our town buildings. What specific town buildings, particularly in District One, do you find most in need of increased maintenance and upkeep, and why? If elected, what would be your plan for addressing the challenges posed by the conditions of these buildings?
Well, I think we need some long-range planning as far as our buildings. And I think our elementary schools are a good example, where we have roofs that are 20 years old. But in order to do good, long-range planning, you need to have the information and the data in order to give it to the committee to make the plan. I think that if we did, in this case, some thermal imaging surveys, this would provide us a really good snapshot of, of what roofs are needed, immediate maintenance, and more the long-range ones where we would have to do specifications and actually go out to bid and things like that. So I, I think we need to do more planning, but we do need the data and the information to go along and do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neimetz. Mr. Bosco, your rebuttal?
Well, actually, there's not very many town buildings in my district, other than two schools. One school is already up for referendum, and it's up to you, the voter, what's going to happen to that school. The second school needs some work, and we have a facility committee that is out there. Actually, there's two schools. They, they, one has all been rebuilt. The other one, we have a facility committee that has been working on all the buildings in town, not just ones in District One. So what we need to do is look at all the buildings, figure out what work needs to be done, figure out which buildings we need to keep, which buildings we need to sell, and then prioritize on the buildings that we plan on keeping. So we already went through the schools, so the next school we'd have to do is probably Parkman Over. There's a few things that'll need to be done, and that's what the committee will come up with and tell us what needs to be done. And at that point, we'll figure out how we are going to address it and where we're going to find the funds. The Stowe School, Early Development Center, has all been rebuilt, and it is all in nice shape, and I don't think we have to worry about that one at all. But that's what the facility committee is doing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bosco. The second question will be asked by Jamie Santiago to Mr. Crisati with a rebuttal from Mrs. Hemler.
Mr. Crisati, in your candidate profile, you state that as part of an economic plan for the town of Enfield, the transit slash train station project and the proposed riverfront development is very important. What specific steps must the town council take to ensure that this project is completed? And in what specific ways would the completion of this project benefit the citizens of District Two and the citizens throughout Enfield?
The first thing that needs to be done in regard to this issue is to make sure that the public is properly informed of all the plans or any of the plans that are going to be implemented in regard to the transit train project and the proposed riverfront development. I think that many people that live down in that area are not properly informed of a lot of issues that are going on with the development process down on South River and North River. And they have to be informed of this. Us as a council would have to get a developer, develop an economic plan with the planning and zoning, to be vigilant with this process and to bring in businesses to help support the riverfront development. This is quite so, a, a large project that's been talked about for many, many years. And at this point in time, we have to take action as a council, and we would have to brainstorm, put a plan together, a two-year plan with goals, outcomes, and more importantly, objectives of this particular program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisati. Mrs. Hemler, your rebuttal?
Well, I've been following the Transit Center since 2007. There's been numerous workshops, public forums, so everything has been out on the table. Two nights ago, the, the council voted on buying the Casket Building, which is the keystone to the Transit Center, and Mr. Crisati voted against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hemler. The third question will be asked by Caroline Williams to Mrs. Marie Davis with a rebuttal from Mrs. Suzak.
Mrs. Davis, in September 2017, Blair Manor, a nursing home in the Skidgoes section of Enfield, announced it was facing foreclosure. On Monday, October 6, supporters of the Blair Manor facility attended a town council meeting in hopes of gaining support to stall the foreclosure of the facility, which currently houses over 60 residents. Should the town council play a role in addressing this issue? If yes, what specific role or roles should it play? If not, why?
Well, the town council should examine what are possible options in this type of a situation to see if it is an option to potentially stall the foreclosure of the facilities. I did watch, watch that meeting and saw the many concerned residents who attended and voiced their, their serious concerns about that foreclosure. So I think that the town council, again, should examine that. And if we could play a role in that, I would seriously consider being able to do that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Suzak, your rebuttal?
Actually, the, for me, I, the residents of Blair Manor are actually citizens of the town of Enfield. And we do intervene on, when there's rent disputes and things like that. So I think that it's important for the town to seek the intervenorship that they did, that they did apply for, and to look out for these residents of the town of Enfield. I'm, I don't know if the town should be involved in whether businesses get to foreclose or whatever they, whatever is a business-oriented business. But I think it's important that the town look out for all its citizens, you know, whether they're elderly or young, and that, that is one of the roles of government.
Thank you. The fourth question will be asked by Haley Woods to Mr. Dunne with a rebuttal from Mrs. Pisner.
Mr. Dunne, in your candidate profile, you state that the most pressing issue facing Enfield right now, which will affect the next two years, is the state budget and the proposed cuts. Under the current budget proposal from the Connecticut General Assembly, Enfield will lose 1.34 million dollars over the next year and $900,000 in the next fiscal year. In light of these budget cuts, can the Enfield Town Council continue to provide the current levels of public services for the citizens of District Four and the town at large without raising taxes? Why or why not?
Well, right now, we've already discussed this problem. I, I was on the committee for the gloom and doom. We thought we were getting hit with about 20 million. So some of the things are in place already. We're doing, consolidating some of our, the library and the soc- social service department and senior center. We're also cutting back on an hour every day at our landfill. So some of the problems are already involved, and we're going to continue to watch our, our pocketbook and our dollars, and I don't believe we'll be able, we, we can waste taxes. I think we'll, we can hold the line right where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne. Mrs. Pisner?
As I said in my opening statements, I am new to politics. But I cannot, so until I get elected and I have a clear understanding of the budget, I can't make any promises that taxes will not go up. The only promise that I can make to you is that I will spend your tax dollars wisely. I will give thoughts to the decisions that I make. I will work hard with both sides of the aisle to ensure that the residents of Enfield are always heard and that we do the best for our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Pisner. Fifth question will be asked by Oralie Berry to Mr. Arnoni with a rebuttal from Mr. Falk.
Mr. Arnoni, according to your campaign profile, you state that you would like to extend your work in social services by forming, forming an assessment team to work with the Enfield Public School System in evaluating mental health in our schools. What are your goals for this team? If reelected, what steps would you and the town council need to take in order to fulfill this project's goals?
So this team now is actually, after Sandy Hook, is actually in the schools now working through and with social services. Now, the schools have also behavioral health specialists that have been assigned to the school from the last budget. We hope to see social services working with the behavioral health service folks so they can together work to find ways of helping some students with behavioral problems. So we, we really want to just make sure that we have a good cooperation between social services and the school department, which we do now. And I must admit that the, we, we've been working together now for probably close to three years in this, in this effort particularly, and it's been a wonderful relationship. So when we can combine services like this between town and school, we'll save quite a bit of money. So when we can use our, our specialists in the school department and vice versa, that is- that is, it's a great cost-saving measure as well as a phenomenal way to help the students in today's world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnone. Mr. Falk, your rebuttal?
I am a mentor over at the Parkman School, so I'm in the school once a week, and I can see firsthand the things that are going on there. Very impressed with the counselors that are there and how they handle special needs children. I think when the Sister Schools program was developed, it certainly helped in providing a better or a more rounded service to those that really need the help. The schools today have problems that we didn't have when I went to school a long time ago. And I think that the school system has adapted really well at addressing these problems. And obviously, there's always more room for improvement, but I think we're doing really well. And this social services system that we have is, right now, it's working. And perhaps we could expand on that and make it a little better down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. The sixth question will be asked by Jamie Santiago to Mrs. Sikala with the rebuttal from Mr. Ludwig.
Mrs. Sikala, Enfield is currently competing with Canada in several United States cities and towns, including Hartford and Bridgeport, to be the location of the Eastern North American headquarters of Amazon. According to the Journal Inquirer, Enfield's bid has the support of the Western Massachusetts Economic Development Council, but does not have the backing of the state of Connecticut. Should the Town Council continue to pursue Enfield's bid to attract Amazon? Why or why not?
Absolutely. If you don't try, the answer's going to be no. So if we just say no and we don't try to get these people here, whether it's Amazon, whether it's another e-commerce, whether it's another big business or small business, national or international, if we don't try to get them here, they won't come. They may not come, but if we don't try, we're not going to know the answer. And to be honest, the same thing happened with the casino. We should have sat down with the casino people years ago and had a conversation with them. But we chose not to. So guess what? We're not going to have a casino, but we're going to have all the negative impacts from a casino with no benefit. So yeah, the answer is absolutely we should, because the answer's going to be no if we don't try.
Thank you, Mrs. Sikala. Mr. Ludwig, your rebuttal?
I agree as well. I think we should continue to pursue. And I think, again, even if you don't win the bid, you get the opportunity to showcase yourself. Get the opportunity to showcase our location between Hartford, Springfield, New York, Boston, right on the riverfront, 91 corridor, the potential of the transit station, our hard-working, educated workforce. I mean, these are things you get to actually show by actually doing bids like this. And maybe we don't win this one? Guarantee there's consultants who are looking at these bids all over the country saying, hmm, this is pretty good. Maybe another company comes here. That's how it works. That's why you do these things. So you may lose once, but you may open another door when this door closes. You know, and I think the key, the interesting thing of this question is, we don't have the backing of the state of Connecticut, but we have it of Western Mass. That should tell people in this town where we need to start looking, when we should grow as a community. That statement right there should tell you where we need to continue to expand, not in Hartford, but maybe we look to Springfield, to Western Mass, and again, the northern section of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. The seventh question will be asked by Caroline Williams to Mrs. Liz Davis with a rebuttal from Mr. Muller.
Mrs. Davis, on Monday, October 23, 2017, the town of Enfield held a public hearing in regard to the future use of the Nathan Hale School Building. In your view, what should be the future use of the Nathan Hale Building? What specific role or roles should the Town Council play in creating the conditions for your proposed future use of the building?
Thank you for that question. Actually, I was pretty vocal in how it was part of a petition going around, Nathan Hale should have stayed a school, plain and simple. By closing that school, we have oversized classrooms in our other 3, K through 2. They should have had a plan before they even closed it. I feel the Town Council should be playing a role in the building, and also, I believe, a major role needs to be our residents and have their input, what we should be doing, what would they like to see? What would they actually like to drive out of their house, up the street, and have to look at every single day, since it's not an educational school anymore, with children playing and watching the vibrant within the neighborhood that now has been removed from the Green Manor area? So I do believe we play a role, but the vital role is the residents in our town and to have their input before we, as a Town Council, do anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Muller, your rebuttal?
We would like to get on the tax roll. I would like to, and do what's best for the community. There's an RFP out currently now as well for that. I'd like to go back to the previous question, quick, the police site-specific issues that could be subject to negotiations. One of them I do currently at work is the electric. We're one of 17 institutions. We bundle a lot of the services, electrical, oil, gas, all those items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. The eighth question will be asked by Haley Woods to Mr. Norris with a rebuttal from Mrs. Ungeyer.
Mr. Norris, according to your candidate profile, you state that one of your priorities is to make every citizen in town know at least five police officers by name. Why is this an important goal? If elected, what specific steps should you and the Town Council take to enhance relations between the greater Enfield community and the police department?
Thank you. Having been a police officer, by the time I was, my oldest son, who's 13 now, I knew at least four police officers growing up. I still remember their names, Mr. Russo, Mr. Connor, Mr. Bunnell, Mr. Katie. They were involved in the town, not just as police officers, but as coaches, mentors. They made a real effort to know the kids in town and their families. They weren't the only ones. Those just happens to be the ones that I knew growing up. Those small actions helped shape my life, because I ended up serving as a police officer alongside some of them. And as far as attacking the opiate issue that's going on, we need to have the police officers involved. We need to educate our parents. We have to have our teachers educating our students. We need community policing to not only hopefully prevent drug use, but to also open up avenues of communication. So our police department is made aware of the users so we can get them help, and at the same time, hopefully lead to the arrests that keep these dealers out of town. This isn't going to be an easy task. My goal, I think, is a reasonable one, though. If you think about it over a two-year span, I'm pretty sure every single person in that police department should be able to know five kids. I don't think it's unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mrs. Ungeyer, your rebuttal?
I think this is a good idea. I think we should start young with the children, getting to know police officers. Many times, they're afraid of the police, and we teach them that they're your friend. In case you need them, you should know their names. And an important way that we could do this is the police officers walking the beat down in Thompsonville area. They walk around there, the residents get to know them, and they get to know the people there, and they'd be able to cite something unusual or if there's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ungeyer. That concludes the second round of questioning. Now we will proceed to the third round. Republicans will go first. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to the same question with no rebuttals. The following question is posed to all candidates. Do you support the referendum proposing the renovation of the John F. Kennedy Middle School? Why or why not? Mr. Bosco?
I don't support it. I feel it's too much money. I feel that it needs to be done. I feel that we need to sit back down at the table, see what can be cut, where we can do what we have to do, and still give the kids a proper education, a safe place to go to school, and everything they need to strive and succeed in a school. I just don't believe that the price tag is set. I feel that there are other alternatives, and I just don't support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bosco. Mrs. Hemler?
Yes, I support it. First-class middle school, first-class high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hemler. Mrs. Suzak?
Yes, I support the JFK referendum. I also support, should it go forward, to have good, strong management. When I was on the elementary school expansion committee, we reduced the cost by 15%. You need good managers. You need good people. And also, I understand that it is the state's responsibility to provide for schools. They will, people will line up to get this money. If Enfield doesn't take it, some other community will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Suzak. Mrs. Pisner?
I am voting yes for the JFK referendum, but it has been a very difficult decision for me, and I am very torn. On one hand, I agree that the school needs to be updated, especially the portable classrooms. However, I do feel the price is too high as well. But after reading the information and talking to the committee members, I and I understand that there is some state reimbursement, that if we don't take, someone else will get. But at the end of the day, it is really going to be up to the Enfield residents to pass this referendum. So if you are as torn as I was, then I encourage you to ask the questions, call the committee members, and vote the best decision that you can, vote what you believe is right.
Thank you, Mrs. Pisner. Mr. Falk?
I am supporting the JFK referendum for a number of reasons. One, the building is 50 years old, and it's showing it. You walk in the auditorium, the springs are popping out of the seats, the armrests are all beat up. So, and that's just a small piece of the big pie. You go into the classrooms, you see a lot of the same thing. It's old. It's worn out. It needs help. And some will say, oh, this is not a good time to do it. I'm going to say it's the best time to do it, because if you put this off, everything is going to get worse. It'll cost more to fix it, and you won't get the state reimbursement. So therefore, now is the time to do it, and I'm all behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Ludwig?
I do not support the referendum at $95 million. I do support JFK as our middle school, but again, $95 million is, in my opinion, unaffordable. It leaves too much debt on the town side. And last time I checked, the majority of us do pay state taxes, so you'll be paying that three-year state taxes as well. And you've heard a number of folks tonight talk about other buildings and other things that need to be done. The taxpayers cannot fund it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Mr. Muller?
Yes, I support the JFK referendum. The infrastructure is way beyond its useful life and needs to be updated. We need to make a first-class middle school for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes, I do support this. It's in great need of repair, and we're going to have to spend the money anyways, and it'll just be a potential Band-Aid. The state has budgeted this money in last year's budget, but actually, it's really up to the Enfield residents now.
Thank you, Mrs. Ungeyer. Mr. Nemitz?
I do support the referendum. I think it's an opportune time to do this project with the 70% money coming from the state of Connecticut, which we would probably lose any future referendums. Another reason is that our children need a positive learning environment. And there has been studies upon studies that show that facilities, climate control, things of this nature have a large effect on their ability to learn and do testing and things like that. So I think we need to do it. It's been a really good school. And if we do it over again, we'll be good for another 30 years, and it's a good use of our taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Mr. Nemitz. Mr. Crisati?
I'm in favor of the referendum. I think it's a great idea with the state reimbursement of 70%, 71%. You're going to be replacing a 50-year-old building. And my concern is the removal of the hazardous materials, asbestos and PCBs, which has been brought up two months ago, a very important issue. To get a new building like this, we're going to attract young families coming into the town of Enfield. This is a win-win situation for us, and once again, I am in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisati. Mrs. Marie Davis?
I'm still undecided at this time about the referendum. I'm still in the process of reviewing the costs associated with this project. I'm just concerned about any costs that might be passed on to the taxpayers in this town. But what I'm most alarmed about is I'm discovering the conditions in our school building. Lots of neglect. There's PCBs and asbestos in the school building that my daughter attends. That's very disturbing to me, as well as the work environment for the faculty in that building. How did this happen? Perhaps poor long-range planning on behalf of this town. So it's very concerning. What I'm still reviewing, nothing is a higher priority to me than a top-shelf education system to attract residents into this town and increase property tax values as well. Thanks.
We would like to remind the audience to hold all applause to the end. Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Denny?
Well, I supported the referendum to go to the voters, and I'll continue to support that. I don't think as a councilman-elect official, you put your opinion on the line. So what I'm doing is I'm going to sit on the fence, and if it's not voted for, I will support whatever we need to do to fix that school. And if it is voted for, then I will support whatever it takes to become a new school. But I think the taxpayers have to have the opportunity to vote on this project themselves without interference from an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Mr. Arnone?
So I was on the pre-ref committee, so I did see the process the committee went through to actually choose what the building will look like. And I know they did all their due diligence to make sure it was affordable to the town of Enfield. With our rate of 71% reimbursement, it's a good deal for the town right now. If we repair what we have to repair, will cost us as much as what we're bonding for this whole project. So I think it's really a good idea for us. It's great for the kids, and the school needs it. So yes, I will be supporting it, and I hope it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Arnone. Mrs. Sikala?
Thank you. As a resident, I am absolutely supporting this. Yes, yes, yes. When we talk about fiscal responsibility, that doesn't mean that we don't spend money. That just means that we spend money the right way. We are going to spend about $30 million to put Band-Aids on JFK and not increase the square footage of a school that is not big enough for our middle school, or we can spend about $35 million and make it larger, make it better. Look around you. This building right here is the result of a referendum that passed, and that is what needs to happen here. 71% reimbursement from the state is a deal we cannot pass up, given what we need to do to JFK. So I will absolutely be supporting it.
Thank you, Mrs. Sikala. Mrs. Liz Davis?
At this time, I am still undecided. We did at the council vote across the board beside one counselor to vote for it to go to referendum. That is the time to give the residents their voice. If you'd want the referendum to pass, then vote yes or no. I think our personal opinion should not matter one bit in how we vote. It's about what the people want. I have been helping Trish and her mom Claire, which have been doing an amazing job in the amount of hours they have dedicated to this. I've been handing out pamphlets to people that want the information delivered, and yes signs to residents that want it. I am all for educating the community and let them decide for themselves instead of pushing a vote down someone's throat. Another major concern I have is, yes, we have our joint facility committee everybody wants to say we're working on. We have over $100 million of repairs to our other schools that are needed. We have mold in our schools that have young children, K through 2, in our staff. To me, their lungs are formed, and that is our crucial time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Norris?
I am voting yes for the referendum. I'm very glad that the voters here in town have a right to express their opinion on a yes or no. The increase in taxes is minimal. It's not 95 million. It's 35 million. It's spread out over 30 years. We also have bonds that are going to be falling off. So it's a temporary increase, but with huge benefits for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the closing remarks. Each candidate will be given 2 minutes or 120 seconds for his or her closing remarks. The Republican Party won the coin toss, so they chose to go second. We will begin with Mr. Nemitz.
One of the issues that did not come up tonight, but will come up in the future, within the next 15, 16 months, we're going to have a casino right across the line.
the line in East Windsor. And what effect it's gonna have on our services has yet to be determined, but it will. Now, in this legislation, it went through with the state, there was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in mitigation money. I will be advocating, if I'm on the council, to put this in a designated account so that we can address the services when they're needed and how they're needed. Whether it be the police department, additional officers, or the Enfield Fire District with additional equipment, maybe, maybe we need a new ambulance or another ambulance, and other services. This way, we can attack these issues and, and put the money where it is supposed to go. I would like to thank the student body and the faculty for holding this debate this evening. I decided to run because we need a more responsive town government. There are times when the people's voices are heard but are not considered. There is a disconnect between the people and their elected officials. And if we are truly gonna be a government of, by, and for the people, I think we need to start listening to the people. I love our country, I love our democracy. One of our major responsibilities as citizens in this democracy is to vote for our elected officials. So I asked the Enfield residents to exercise their ro, their right to vote next Tuesday, November seventh. Nothing would make me more happy than to see a very large turnout. To the residents of District One, give me a chance to represent you. I will not disappoint you. To the people of Enfield, give this Democratic slate a chance to lead. And together, let's get Enfield moving again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neimetz. Mr. Crisati?
I'd like to thank the Youth Vote Committee for putting on this event. Thank you, Mr. Crane. I'm eager to contribute to the future community activities and events, engage with and listen to constituents, and ultimately strengthen the relationship between the local government and the greater Enfield community. If elected, I will be an active listener to the citizens of Enfield and do what's right for everybody. I will listen to their needs and their priorities. With data collection of these priorities, we need to develop plans with goals, objectives, outcomes, and results. We need to work together as a team and have a positive outlook and a vision for Enfield. Come out November seventh, support Bob Crisati, District Two, and all of our representatives here. Vote on Row A, District One, Steve Neimetz, myself, Marie Davis, and District Three, Ed Denny, and District Four, and our at-large, Tom Arnone, Gina Sikala, Liz Davis, and Tim Norris, and our Board of Ed candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crisati. Mrs. Marie Davis?
I am sitting here today because I believe in this town, believe in making it better, and believe in strengthening the voices of the people of Enfield. What has motivated me to pursue this candidacy are the people of Enfield, and most importantly, what I've heard from those residents. What I have heard is a frustration with the majority party in town, a frustration that they are not listened to. They have concerns for the future of the schools, the lack of maintenance of our town buildings, the risk of losing programs and services in our esteemed senior center, the lack of updating our town library and its collection, the lack of a welcoming climate for our small business owners, the weakening of our infrastructure and high taxes. Through the years, I've seen residents voice their opinion to no avail. Petitions were signed and submitted, residents created an organized presence at town meetings. However, it has not been enough. Today, I'm here to tell you that if elected, I will be the voice of the people of Enfield. A vote for our dynamic Democratic slate will be a vote for the people of Enfield. A vote for me on November seventh is a vote to gain your voice in this process. Next Tuesday, vote across Row A, and I look forward to seeing everyone at the polls at Fermi on November seventh. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Denny?
As an elected official, I've always been your voice, and I've always heard people. I've answered every phone call, responded to every inquiry that comes to me. I've always, I'm always in the town hall, finding out what's going on. My reputation is exempt for District Four and its town. If elected, I will continue to do so. And if you have a problem, I hold office hours. I'm at Dunkin' Donuts on Route Five Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from ten to eleven. And I'm on Dunkin', I'm at Dunkin' Donuts on Elm Street on Tuesdays and Fridays from ten to eleven. Those are my office hours. If you have any problems, please call me. Vote for me November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, and Row A for all my partners up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Mr. Arnone?
As a counselor, over the past six years, I've had the opportunity to work with town administrators and various committees. I've had the pleasure of working with numerous residents on a variety of projects and initiatives. If reelected, I will continue to support collaborative efforts between police, EMS, social services, and Enfield Public Schools to address Enfield's growing heroin epidemic. I will continue to support community policing, student mental health issues, including suicide prevention. I will strive to ensure your tax dollars are being used wisely to provide quality services needed in our town. And please, come out and vote on November seventh. Vote for our slate. They're phenomenal people, I'm excited to be working with them in the future. But it's important to get out and vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arnone. Mrs. Sikala?
Thank you. Thank you to the Youth Vote Committee. We really appreciate this opportunity. I always find these debates both enlightening and a lot of fun. Thank you to my family, because without their support, I would not be able to do this, and would not have been able to do this for the last four years. I think I'm known as pretty much a straight shooter. I don't back down, I fight for what's right, I ask the tough questions, and I'm an advocate and a voice for the residents here in Enfield, and if I reelected, I will continue to do that. I'd like to quote former President Barack Obama. "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek." If you're satisfied with how things have been going in Enfield, and satisfied with, happy with the leadership, by all means, vote for the same majority and expect the same result. But if you wanna change this over here, these Democrats up here, we are that change that you need, and we are that change that you seek. Please vote for the Democrats in District One, Steve Neimetz, in District Two, Bob Crisati, three, Marie Davis, District Four, Ed Denny, and this at-large slate, which I'm incredibly proud to be a member of. Tom Arnone, myself, Liz Davis, and Tim Norris. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sikala. Mrs. Liz Davis?
I am so honored to run with this amazing, dedicated team of Democrats that are truly about the people. Our Democrat slate for Town Council and Board of Ed is of exceptional candidates. Collectively, they bring experience from numerous fields, and all have held or currently hold in leadership roles professionally. Three of our candidates are military veterans. Combined, they have over a hundred years' experience in the military. Four of our candidates have over a hundred years' experience working in the field of public education. Two candidates are professors in higher education. The remaining candidates include lawyer, mental health professionals, small business owners, prior law enforcement, retirees, and corporate professionals. This overall strength and depth of knowledge will serve our town well. Their expertise will be valuable in many areas that impact Enfield. Fiscal responsibility, long-range planning, listening to input and acting on that input, working together as a team, and understanding others' perspective. All strongly value the citizens' voices of Enfield. Row A for a dedicate, vote Row A for a dedicated team of people who will put community input first, will provide honest leadership, will work to improve the quality of education and town services through responsible government, and work for economic development. Vote Row A for true leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Mr. Norris?
I want to thank again the Youth Committee, and I want to thank everybody that came out. And if you're at home watching, thank you. It's good to become an informed voter. Parties really matter at election time. After that, matters about working together and being able to be a team. Over the last many months, I've knocked on a lot of doors and met some really amazing people. I've heard your concerns, whether they be about the senior center, taxes, small business, JFK, not feeling like you have a voice in your local community anymore. I want you to know that if I'm elected, one of my main priorities will be to help you return your, help return your voices to the Town Council and the Board of Ed. I'd love to set up some subcommittees. We have enough knowledge in this town to solve every problem that we have. Give them a problem to one of these committees and let them delve into it, and hopefully come back with, to us with some great answers. I will make myself available to you to contact me. I'll do my best to answer your questions. If I don't have the answer, I'll admit it, and I'll try to find it for you. I love Enfield, I believe Enfield's greatest moments lie ahead of us, not behind. I'm sitting with an amazing group of Democratic candidates. I can tell you firsthand that they're full of passion, energy, and empathy. They love Enfield and want to do what is best for Enfield, and work together as a team for everybody. So on November seventh, I humbly ask for you to vote for me and all the Democratic candidates, both for the Town Council and the Board of Ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Now, the Republican Party will give their closing remarks. Mr. Bosco?
Yeah, I want to thank, can you hear me? I want to thank the town residents for the five tremendous year, uh, terms that I've had, and I asked for your vote to make it a sixth. I also want to thank my family, because they're the ones that suffered for all these ten years that I've been on the council. My poor wife, every time we go to the store, people stop you, and you have to talk to them for ten minutes because of something for the town. I, I may not be the best speaker, I'm not very articulate. I stumble on my words, and I really think I'm pretty terrible. But one thing I can tell you is I'm a damn good councilman. And I'm here fighting for you people and the people of my district every day. I'm probably one of the most available. People come to my shop daily to come talk about little things here and there about the town. If you listen to the people speaking today here at this podium, one thing they can tell you, we did consolidate services. They all admitted it. So the problem is, the point and blame of this whole world. We sat there, we consolidated, we looked, is there more we can do? Absolutely. But you have to do things a little at a time and make sure what you did worked, and then move to the next project. I will say, working with this group, we have a very diverse, uh, people, amount of people here, and we will give you the best for your vote. And I also have to say that, um, I lost my track of thought, but there you go. That's where I'm not a very good speaker. But like I says, I will take care of the town of Enfield, I do what's best for the district. I make sure that when a complaint is come in, comes in, it is taken care of. And as you notice, more roads, more infrastructure, and more work was done in District One than any other district in town. That's because I fight for you, the people of District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bosco. Mrs. Hemler?
Thank you to the students and the staff for hosting this forum. Since deciding to run, to, since deciding to be a candidate for Town Council, I've been walking door to door, meeting residents, and I found out what I already knew. The people of Enfield are good and positive, and in District Two, they are invested. I see District Two as a shiny diamond, where I will be able to join an innovative group of Republicans who believe as I do. Do not turn your back on the district, but to polish it into a gleaming brilliance. I've served as a fire commissioner in Thompsonville for one term, and I currently am the, on the Enfield Tax Appeals Board, where Red Edgar had voted for my reappointment. Since two thousand and five, I've been raising money and volunteering at Loews and Fishes. I founded a community group called Voices for Thompsonville, where the charge was to change the perception of Thompsonville. I've volunteered for years for Clean Sweep Home Front and the Community Emergency Response Team, known as CERT. I am currently the treasurer, trustee, and a ministry leader at Cornerstone Church. I've organized two fundraisers for fi, fire victims, one on High Street and the other on Church Street. Being part of my district neighborhood is, is who I am, not something new that's just because I'm running for Town Council. I love the area, and I love what it has to offer. I want to be an advocate for District Two and the Thompsonville Village where I live, so I can be a catalyst for the economy, or the economic prosperity for the whole town. Please vote for me, Kelly Hemler, and my whole team, the Republican Council at Large, Lori, Mike, Peter, Joe, all along Row B, because proven leaders are needed to keep Enfield moving forward. As a fiscally efficient mindset, I know where the team, I know we are the team to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Suzak. Mrs. Pisner?
In closing, I'd like to say that, you know, vote for me, Donna Suzak, District Three. I would provide balance to the council. I'm one of these people who can see all the shades of gray. Also, I understand that in order to have a long-range plan, you have to pass referendums. In the time I've sat on the Board of Ed and the Town Council, we've passed four referendums. Referendums are the only way you can ensure that you have a plan that will go on behind the, beyond the last time they swept the CIP to get a little money to do something else. And keeping, for me, keeping Enfield affordable and growing has always been a priority to me. So if I'm elected in District Three, I will focus on leisure and facilities, and hopefully pass referendums that will give us a five-year plan or a ten-year plan. But to do that, I'm gonna need the rest of my team. I'm gonna need Joey in District One, and Kelly in Two, Marie in Three, and Four, me in Three, and Marie in Four, Peter, Mike, Joe, and Lori. So please, vote Row B for a balanced team that can bring you the Enfield we need for the future.
Thank you, Ms. Suzak. Sorry for the confusion. Mrs. Pisner?
I'd like to thank the Enfield Youth Group for, Youth Vote Group for a wonderful night. I've been walking my district since the middle of August, and I haven't lost an ounce, okay? Because I stress eat because of this. But while I'm walking, I actually had one of my neighbors look at me and say, why should I vote for you? And my answer was easy. I am passionate for Enfield. I am a self-starter. If I see that something needs to be done, I jump in, I don't wait to be asked. I am not shy to ask questions. I'm not shy to ask for help or advice. I'm approachable, I'm open-minded, and I believe I can work with both sides of the aisle to make the best decisions for Enfield. It is now ultimately up to the Enfield residents to choose who they think will do the best job for District Four. I encourage you to vote for me. I will be humbled, I will work hard, I promise. And I encourage you to vote for my teammates that sit with me here. They have become a family to me, they have become friends, they become mentors, they took me under their wing as a newbie, and I have learned so much. And I know together, we can keep Enfield strong, and we can keep Enfield growing. So please, vote for me, Marie Pisner, and my entire group on Row B. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pisner. Mr. Falk?
I would like, also like to thank the students for organizing and facilitating this debate tonight, as well as the EHS staff for providing guidance and support. I joined the Enfield J.C.'s in nineteen seventy-two as a means to meet new people and get involved in my community. Let me close by repeating the J.C. creed. We believe that faith in God brings meaning and purpose to human life, that the brotherhood of man transcends the sovereignty of nations, that economic justice can best be won by free men through free enterprise, that government should be of laws rather than of men, and that earth's great treasure lies in human personality, and that service to humanity is the best work of life. I love this town. I have provided forty-five years of community service, and I ask for your vote on November seventh for councilman at large, along with the entire Republican team, Joey Bosco in District One, Kelly Hemler in District Two, Donna Suzak in District Three, Marie Pisner in District Four, along with at-large candidates Mike Ludwig, Lori Ungar, and Joe Mueller. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Mr. Ludwig?
As we sit here tonight, we have to understand the world around us has changed. We have to react pro-
We have to react proactively where budgeting becomes a 12-month process. Managing every dollar tightly will allow Enfield to not only weather the economic storm that the state is currently going through and trying to pass on to the municipalities, but will provide us opportunities for growth and stability. People need to understand that government isn't the answer for everything. Government should be like a good referee. It should enforce the rules, allows a level playing field for all, provides equal opportunity in fairness of the taxpayers or the individual can decide the outcome. I hope folks remember when we used to talk about discretionary income, or actually being able to make a joke. I mean, we have to get back to be able to have a little fun when we're doing this and understanding that everyone's opinion, even if you don't agree with them, doesn't mean they're not listening to you. This means they have a different opinion than you do, and doesn't mean they're bad Over the past few years, Republican leadership through the Enfield Town Council and Board of Education has developed a healthy and productive working partnership. I believe through continued Republican leadership, we will further build upon a healthy working partnership as we move forward. In closing, I truly enjoy working hard for the Enfield taxpayers. I enjoy meeting with, discussing all things Enfield with our residents. I am approachable. I have a sense of humor. I respect everyone who gets themselves out of bed every single day to do their part that makes Enfield such a great place to live. I respectfully am asking for your vote on Tuesday, November 7th, for myself, Mike Ludwig, and for all my colleagues sitting with me on Row B. The future is bright. You better find some shades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you again for hosting this event this evening. I've been told I can be a bit quiet, but that is because I'm listening and hearing what is being discussed. I try to understand problems and focus on positive outcomes and to do it. I listen and educate myself on all aspects. That is why I'm asking for your vote, Republican Council-at-Large member. As I mentioned earlier, I have strong ties at Enfield, my family, my job at Isnan Tuck, and my community spirit. My life experience and professional talents, which I discussed earlier, will be in addition to a strong group of Republicans who have the same wants for Enfield as I do. Be fiscally efficient, look towards the future, expand our community, be more vibrant, and continue to be forward-thinking. Tonight, I'm asking you to allow me to be part of that vision as a Council-at-Large member. I believe we must continue to make Enfield a place people want to live and work. Enfield residents are used to having their services consistent, our employees in their jobs, and Enfield on a steady course. I have shared my proven track record serving the community. I've shared my passion. Tonight, I ask you to vote for me, Joe Mueller, and my Republican friends, Lori, Mike, Peter, and the appropriate district counselors, Joey in District 1, Kelly in District 2, Donna in District 3, and Marie in District 4. As Mayor Scott Copeland has said to me many times, Republican leadership has set the standard that keeps Enfield an attractive and affordable place for all of us. On November 7th, I will continue the economic development and financial successes already started by the current council. Your vote for me, Joe Mueller, and the rest of the Republican team for the Town Council will be a positive vote to keep Enfield on the right path, and tonight, I ask you to vote along Row B and continue to keep Enfield focused and moving forward. And that can only be done with Republican leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Mrs. Ungar?
I'd like to thank the Youth Vote and the great job you did tonight, and Mr. Crane and his whole crew. I'd also like to thank all of you for coming out here tonight. I know there's a lot of other places you could be. My name is Lori Ungar, and for many years, I have volunteered and found out that community service and giving back is a wonderful way to respond when I've been given so very much. I would like to see new growth through business and economic development and to be fiscally responsible. I'd like to maintain our high-quality educational path under our great new superintendent, Mr. Chris Dreszek, and I'd like to give Enfield the very best that we can afford. I also want to maintain the current leadership on the council, so please vote for me and my entire team on Row B. Joe Bosco, Kelly Hemler, Donna Suzak, Marie Pinzer, Peter Falk, Mike Ludwig, and Joe Mueller. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Ungar. This concludes this evening's debate. I would like to thank the candidates for their participation and for providing Enfield High School students with the opportunity to become more acquainted with the democratic process. On behalf of the Enfield High School Youth Vote Committee, we would like to thank Enfield High School's Youth Vote Advisors, Mr. Sean Patrick Crane, Mr. Joel Sinay, Mrs. Amy Whitbro, and Mr. Anthony Allegro; Principal Ms. Erin Clark and the Enfield High School Administration; Director of Humanities, Ms. Megan Burr; Enfield High School Superintendent, Mr. Christopher Dreszek; and the Central Office Staff and Administration; Head Custodian, Jim O'Neill and staff; Mr. Nate Ferreira, Enfield High School Audio-Visual Service Coordinator; Mr. Bruno and the ETV staff; all of Enfield High School Youth Vote students who made this event possible; and last but not least, you, our audience members, who participated in tonight's important civic event. We now invite you to enjoy refreshments outside in the hallway and take a chance to speak with the candidates. Have a safe and pleasant night. Thank you.